We'll call the Pennington County Commission Meeting for April 16th, 2013, to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge led by Dustin Willett, our Emergency Management Director.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish to make any amendments to the agenda?
Item number 10, has that been pulled off, Holly? Okay, I'd like to pull it from the consent calendar.
Okay, item number 10 has been requested to be removed from the consent calendar. Any other changes? If not, those in favor, or the chair would entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, so move with that correction. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended, with item 10 removed. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hines, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today I have placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 2nd, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $1,627,422.60. To acknowledge the Order for Organization and incorporation for the Cedar Gulch Sanitary and Water District as submitted by the Auditor's Office. To approve the Adopt a Highway application for a two-mile stretch of Deerfield Road by the Black Hills Area Geocachers as submitted by the Highway Department. To recognize the volunteers for the month of March 2013 as submitted by Human Resources. We'll skip number 10. And finally, to continue taxing increment District Number 65, the Minnesota Street Project with the City of Rapid City until the May 7th, 2013 Commission Meeting.
Anyone wish to remove any other items on the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus item number 10.
Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 10. Mr. Holloway.
Oh, well, I see this is a three-year contract. And, but, when you read the contract, it looks like it's a three-year contract, but we don't know what the dollar amount's going to be for the three years. And I'm wondering if Dakota Plains is agreeing to the $196,000 for 2014, because we're in the process of working on our 2014 budget right now, and if we're going to sign another contract, we ought to nail that price down. Is there anybody from Dakota Plains here?
No. There's just a statement on the bottom of it that says we reserve the right to renegotiate the dollar amount for those three years, but it's perfectly acceptable to sign it just for 2013 for a one-year time period, and we'll readdress it during budget hearings.
Mr. Chair, I personally would prefer that we only do this for one year. And I know there's some different things going on at a state level in investigating this kind of service, so I would like to wait and see what happens there.
So it would be just for 2013 then, is that what we're saying? Well, do we need to postpone this for two weeks and to...
No, just a motion to approve at one year.
That would be my motion to approve this for a one-year contract.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the indigent legal services for one year, 2013. Any further discussion?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. I hope that the state allows us in on those discussions they have, since it's our contracts and our responsibility and not theirs to pay it.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd be glad they pass this off to the state, they can sign the contract and pay for it.
Well, is that a substitute motion?
No, it's a suggestion.
Okay. Any further comments? We do have a motion in a second. There are no further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 12, the National Corrections Week Proclamation.
Good morning, Kevin Toome, Pandy County Sheriff. Just a request for the Commission to approve a proclamation and recognition of National Corrections Week and have the proclamation read at the next Commission meeting. We'd have some correctional staff here to be recognized and recognition of the proclamation and the week, so...
Any comments or questions?
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature on the proclamation.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You're going to read the proclamation next week, or next meeting?
Whoever you want to read it, we'll read it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, from the State's Attorney. First reading and public hearing of Ordinance 636, an ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Patrick Brody from the State's Attorney's Office. Mr. Vargo asked me to draft this ordinance to address a particular situation that had come to his attention. We have a state statute that reads very similar to Section 1 of this ordinance, actually almost exactly the same, that prohibits disorderly conduct in public places. There've been issues with people who become disruptive in the detox facility, but outside the lobby, which would be a public area, behind locked doors. And unless they damage property or assault someone, there's not a real firm basis for law enforcement to intervene in that situation. This ordinance would take our state statute on disorderly conduct and apply it to non-public areas of county facilities, as well as public areas, so it would give law enforcement a basis to intervene in the locked section of detox. So that was the purpose behind, that was the purpose behind this ordinance. And I think that was a solution that Mr. Vargo, and it might have been a suggestion from the Sheriff's Office as well, came up with to allow Sheriff's deputies or Rapid City Police Officers to address people who are being disorderly and disruptive within the detox facility. Given the situation there, it's difficult to simply kick someone out, because they're usually there, because they're coming down from alcohol or drugs of some sort, but it allows law enforcement to intervene. I don't know if you have any questions for me about this, but that's the background.
Any questions from the Commission?
So, what you're saying is currently, the state disorderly conduct statute does not apply to someone inside a county building, or on county property?
It applies in public areas of county buildings. For example, in the Public Safety Building, we have lobbies on each floor that would be public areas. They're held open during business hours and people can walk in. But once you get past the lobby, most of those doors are locked and the office areas aren't really open to the public. You have to be invited in. They're primarily just for the employees. In the detox facility, there's, I understand, I've never actually been to the detox facility, but in the detox...
I'm glad.
Well...
You wouldn't be here, probably.
For any reason.
You're right.
Wouldn't want to explain that to the boss, but there's a lobby area that would be a public area, but once you get past the lobby, back into the more treatment parts of the facility, it's locked down, and those aren't public, because they're not open to the general public to come in. You have to be specifically brought to detox, or be staff there, or law enforcement. So this ordinance just says any public building, or any county building, whether we own it or rent it, you can commit disorderly conduct anywhere within that, whether or not it's an area typically open to the public.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 636, the ordinance prohibiting disorderly conduct. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 14, abatement application.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. We have one abatement. This is simple. State law says that if you have owner-occupied classification on your property and you replat, add additional property, change the identity of the property, that the owner-occupied classification remains without making another application. As I've said before, that makes sense, but in practical application, it's a little difficult, because we changed the legal description and the parcel number and all of that. And occasionally, we drop one of them, and the property owner brought this to our attention. It should, it was owner-occupied before, because of the replating and the change, it still should be owner-occupied. The abatement here, even though we are abating value, it's the equivalent of the owner-occupied difference in taxes.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the abatement for Nick McWilliams.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the abatement. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hines, item 15, items A, B, C, and D from the Highway Department.
Good morning, Hines Jungi, Pandy County Highway Superintendent. Moving a little slow this morning, the snow shovel got the best of me at home, so...
You're old enough, no better.
Yeah, it's true. First item I have is award recommendation for Plateau Lane. We opened bids on April 9th. We received six bids, and the low bidder was Mainline Contracting Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $1,115,685. This bid was $153,591, or 12.1% below engineer's estimate. And I have funding for this project in my 2013 budget, and we are recommending awarding a bid to Mainline Contracting Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, Hines, I forgot, will that be completed this year, or will it go into...
Yes, November 15th, I believe. Substantial completion, that means the paving and the concrete work's all done. They have until May 15th of next year to finish the topsoil and the seeding, if the weather sets in, so...
No government funds involved in this that could be yanked out at the last minute?
Nope, this is all unorganized road funds, unorganized road tax funds, that we've been setting aside for quite a few years to do it.
Make a motion to approve that bid letting... Have a motion to approve the bid as described. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Secretary has all the details. There being no further discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Next item is award recommendation for the Reservoir Road Project. This is a two-part project. The county's portion is grading, surfacing, storm sewer, curb and gutter, and then Rapid Valley Water and Sanitation District is going to do some water and sewer improvements. And the bids were let together, or in conjunction with each other, and we looked at the total of both bids to determine the low bidder. We received five bids for both projects, and the low bid was submitted by RCS Construction Incorporated of Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $1,624,053. This was a combined bid of both the sewer and the county's portion. And this bid was $612,693.95, or 29.27% below the engineer's estimate. And we recommend approval of this award to RCS Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $1,624,53.
Any questions?
And I did attach an email to you from Rapid Valley Water and Sanitation District, where they concur with awarding the bid to this company. That's your last page. Their portion of the bid amount is $134,465.6, just for your information. And this will also be funded with unorganized road tax. Or unorganized road funds, is a better word?
Okay, do we have any further comments or questions?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hines, the reason you bid these two together, I mean, you have to have just the one contractor doing both of them.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Again, I would make a motion to approve this bid as presented by the Highway Superintendent.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second to approve the bid as presented. And this is for the Reservoir Road Project. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C.
The next item is Resolution 04-16-2013. It's a resolution to provide matching funds for the Federal Land Access Program, Project SDPFH 17-1 PRINZ 8, Hill City to Lead, which is Forest Highway 17. This is a joint project between Pennington County and Lawrence County. I attached a map. Basically, it's a mile piece of road from Rochford North to the Lawrence County line. The new MAP 21 federal legislation that passed changed the program. One of the key changes to that program was that the local agencies had to provide an 18.05% match. Basically, in order for this project to continue to move forward and use funding out of MAP 21, we had to agree to provide a match. So this resolution says that the Commissioners support the project and that we will provide matching funds to complete this project. Our portion in Lawrence County is a complete reconstruction of that road. It's narrow, it's just a blotter surface, and we're going to get a 24-foot wide road with shoulders on it to match the same design as what the Lawrence County part is. The Lawrence County portion is, there's two curves they're going to straighten out and do a, hopefully a thin overlay on their portion. And you can see that they gave different funding scenarios, a worst-case scenario. And then also, we've used some money out of the Forest Highway Program, which we didn't have to match, and then some funding out of the new MAP 21 funds. So that's where we come up with the match of $269,035. And I will provide for this in my 2014 budget. So we're looking for a motion to approve the attached resolution. Yes.
In your long-range road plan that you have, was this part of that plan?
This was not identified in the long-range transportation plan, but I had it identified in the federal highway, Forest Highway Program, which at that time was 100% funding. So I really wasn't concerned about a local match, but due to the new MAP 21 legislation, we have to come up with the max. So I will rework my budget to ensure that we have the matching funds, whatever is required for 2014. And then the Lawrence County portion won't be constructed until 2015. This is an approved project.
Assuming you're not going to get a large increase in your budget, you'll be able to absorb this?
Yes, I will not be. I got reserve funds in the road and bridge fund that we've been putting aside for Sheridan Lake Road and other long-range projects, so...
Okay.
It's attainable, it's doable. I will not be asking for a supplement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How does the new match, how does that affect the rest of this road as it goes down south, the road to Nowhere?
That's a totally different project. That one is from Rochford South, that was that $9 million allocation we got. So this is a separate project under the Forest Highway Program.
Is that road already paid for, or we're going to have to come up with 18% of that, or...
No, that, there's no match for that $9 million that was allocated for that portion.
We haven't got it yet either, have we?
Well, the state of South Dakota's got the funding, or they're committed to the funding, and then all the engineering and the EIS work is being paid, vouched through the state towards that $9 million, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That statement about the road to Nowhere, I'd have to get Commissioner Busker on its front page of the Hill City paper, since the reporter's here today.
I hope so. Any further discussion on the issue of signing the resolution? If not, do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature on the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the signature on the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next item is Federal Land Access Program. That's a new program under MAP 21. Originally, it was a Forest Highway Program. This funding can only be spent on forest highways within the national forest. MAP 21 changed that, where now those funds are available for any routes that access federal land, which not only for service, but it could be serving the Bad Lions National Park, or federal trust lands, tribal lands. And I submitted a letter to you, pretty detail on explaining the program. We have to put in a letter of intent, and then that letter of intent has to be sent in by April 30th, and it goes to a program decision committee comprised of three members. One is a representative from Federal Highway Administration, one is from the South Dakota Department of Transportation, and the third one is the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. Bob Wilcox was appointed as the third member. Those three people will look at all the letters of intent, and they will prioritize them and decide which project should move forward to seek funding under MAP 21. We have, Pandy County Highway Department would like to submit a letter of intent for a realignment for a portion of Norris Peak Road. Most of you are familiar with Norris Peak Road, there's a sharp 15 mile an hour curve, and then there's a steep hill, and we've had vehicles off of it, and the propane truck go off of that steep hill through the guardrail. And we are proposing to submit a letter of intent for that project. It's about a half mile long, and our estimated cost is about $690,000. We would have to have matching funds of $124,000. Carl Ingwell is here from the National Park Service. They would like the county to submit a letter of intent to pave approximately 3,162 feet of 239th Street and 195th Street. This is exit 116 off Interstate 90, and it provides access to a Minuteman Missile Site Delta 09, which they preserved, and it's a tourist attraction for them. The estimated cost of this project is $505,920, and the National Park Service is proposing to provide the local matching funds within Kind Services to match the federal dollars for this project. They, I believe I heard from Carl this morning, and I'll let him come up and address some questions you may have. They also have a couple other projects in Jackson County that they are going to submit. And I guess I wanted to bring this to the Commissioners' attention, so that you're aware that we're going to submit these letters of intent. Once they're submitted, this three-member committee will decide which projects get to move forward. And we also had some conversation, phone conversation, with the engineer representing the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. They were, at that time, asking for a letter of intent for Bombing Range Road, which is a county-maintained road also. They wanted to reconstruct portions of that road to get it up to a 65 mile an hour roadway and put an overlay on it. But we had a meeting last week, but the snowstorm canceled that meeting. They had no other information put together, so I do not have a letter of intent, but I wanted to make you aware of that, that you might see a request for that next year for that particular road. So at this time, I guess I'd like to, with your indulgence, to have Carl come up and talk a little bit about the National Park request, and then hopefully the Commissioners can authorize the Highway Department to submit these letters of intent. Carl?
Hines, just one question for you before you... The three-person panel that's going to make a determination, which ones of these are going to be funded?
Yes.
Who's that three-person panel?
I don't know the name of the federal highway person. It's a person from FHWA, one from South Dakota DOT, and then Bob Wilcox, the Pennington County Association County Commissioners, or your executive directors on there too. So those three people will make the determination.
Okay.
So if you have one of the projects that you really want to support, a couple phone calls would probably help.
Mr. Chair, I need to say something too, before Carl comes up. In case it comes up down the line, I used to own some land adjoining this road project, and of course, that's all you hear when somebody gets on the county commission, they want to build a road to their house, and that's not the case in this fact. I sold the property, have no interest in it anymore, so in case somebody wants to bring it up and make a deal out of it, there's no deal.
And the biggest reason I selected this portion of the road is because we've had a high number of accidents, there's been some fatalities on it, and when we start getting propane tanks coming down a hill and tipping over, it needs our attention, and something should be done, and this is a program that would help get it... something should be done, and this is a program that would help get us to correcting some of the dangerous curves on that road, so.
I'm assuming that's your number-one project.
Yes, that'd be highway department's number-one project. Okay, Carl?
Good morning. Carl Ingwell from Minuteman National Historic Site. This is our, as Heine had alluded to, this is our number-three priority. We did submit through Jackson County. We're gonna be building a new visitor center here, hopefully to break ground in hopefully June, and this is at exit one thirty-one, and we have about eight hundred feet that we're looking for the flat program to help supplement, as well as our national park is our regional in Omaha is willing to go ahead and grant the twenty percent for all three projects if approved. So Jackson County did approve, with the commissioners, did approve our number-one priority, which was visitor center at exit one thirty-one. Then we have another, the launch control facility, that's at exit one twenty-seven, and that's about twenty-one hundred feet long. And then this is, as Heine had mentioned too, this is our number-three priority, which twenty-one, twenty-one hundred square feet, and which leads to our missile silo. The Air Force gave us the launch control facility and the silo itself, and so that's what we do. Our average attendance is about seventy thousand people that come, and we don't even have highway signs on I-90 yet, so. And we've done that for a purpose, just because right now we can't handle the volume of people coming throughout the summer, so. Is there any questions that you all have for me? Probably the biggest thing is the, for, is the highway, we are willing to pay the twenty percent, eighteen point zero five percent match.
Mr. Chair, you maybe kind of have just answered my question, but you did, in Heine's letter, it did say that you provided in-kind services, and I was kind of curious, I mean, you've mentioned money, what is?
Right, well, the federal provided the eighty, about eighty percent. What, yes, what they try to do is the in-kind services, if you guys were adamant about having the road, you could provide some of the resources, culverts, technical support, that in-kind support that would help reduce, you know, some of the costs.
Any other questions or comments? Heine, do you have anything further?
No. All I would need is a motion of approval to submit the Norris Peak project and the Bad Lions National Park project.
That'd be my motion.
The Minuteman, Minuteman.
We are separate parks.
Okay, separate parks, the Minuteman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, am I correct?
Yep.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next item is item sixteen A, IT job title changes.
Good morning. Russ Tinswald, IT Director for the county. I think the memo you have in front of you is pretty straightforward, but just a quick word of explanation. So what we're requesting is to change the job titles for the IT department. I did work with Nick Strout to make sure that this was in line with what Nick is working on doing for the rest of the county and trying to organize, better organize some of the job titles. Did visit with my staff, they're fine with these changes. Just a comment on what the purpose is here. You know, we're all trying to, the department heads and the commissioners are continuously trying to recruit, hire, and retain the best employees for the county so that we can provide the most efficient government that we can. This is one little piece in that. When we have people within our department, or new people that we're trying to recruit or hire, one of the questions they always ask is, is there room for me to advance within that department? And if you look at our existing job titles, that's a little bit unclear. The other questions are things like, how does the county handle things for merit pay, cost of living increases, things like that, and you're gonna get to address that on the next item. But these all play together, and it's a good recruitment tool, and it's a good motivational tool for our existing staff. So I'll entertain any questions.
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To Nick. You know, we've talked in the compensation committee about trying to reduce the number and fit people into the categories we already have, and now we're gonna invent about eight, ten new ones, correct?
Good morning, Nick Strout, HR Director for the county. Russ and I have worked together, and we feel that some departments have specialized job titles that only apply to them, and what we're trying to do is clean these up. We feel that maybe some of the past job descriptions weren't exactly what someone in the industry would describe the duties that were being performed. And so, to your question, Ron, we are trying to minimize the overall jobs that affect a lot of different departments, but now that we have one combined IT department, these are only affecting his department, since we took the sheriff's people over. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question or not, but.
Nick, if I can add that this actually does reduce the total number. If you look, there's one less or two less at the bottom than what there are at the top, so it is a real slight reduction in the total number of job titles that we have.
Whatever.
Any further discussion?
I'm assuming then, as you're changing the job titles, the job descriptions have changed.
They will. We, the only, we've only changed one recently, and it was because we were hiring for that position. We haven't changed any others, but we certainly will make sure that everything is in line and matching before we hire for any of those positions.
With these changes in job titles, is there gonna be a change in pay for those positions?
No, as noted in that first paragraph in the memo, that these changes will not make any changes in wages or job responsibilities.
And this is something I'm gonna try to expand to the whole county, and as Ron alluded to, maybe through the compensation committee, we're gonna try to clean up all of the job descriptions. This was just a first step with one department, and then we're just going to expand it out, and hopefully we'll have every department cleaned up. That's our goal.
I'd make a motion to approve the changes in the job titles as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change in job titles as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item seventeen, fiscal year twenty-fourteen Pennington County Budget Guidelines.
Good morning. The department heads met, as the letter says, and, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Martha Smith, no, I'm Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor, since nineteen eighty-seven. The department heads met on April eleventh and would like to offer basic recommendations to the commissioners for the initial two thousand fourteen budget prep. We feel this will be a good starting point for discussion at budget hearings and a solid estimate of tax dollars needed after using new revenue estimates. Therefore, we recommend the following to start the two thousand and fourteen budgeting. A two-point-one percent COLA to the wage scale effective January first, two thousand and fourteen, this matches with the CPI that is granted from the state. Cost estimate of that is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Allow merit increases, yet phase out the B-step, which is the step that was created last year, not even halfway between. Merit steps will move the employee to the next step on the scale without using the B-step. That will give the majority of the employees a one percent merit. You gave one and a half percent last year, our steps are two and a half, so this gives the extra one percent. Those employees on the B-step that do not receive a merit will stay on that scale until they do deserve a merit, thus, that's the word, phasing out the B-step. Again, we reiterate that merits are not automatic. Cost estimate of this is three hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. The healthcare premiums have been recommended by the Healthcare Trust Board to a five percent increase to both the employee and the county. I have individual, different percentages and what those actual rates would be, if the board would like me to go over those. A seven percent was put in there as requested. A cost estimate between five and seven percent ranges between a hundred and fifty-two thousand, five thirty-two to two hundred and thirteen, five forty-five. Now, that's not an exact, because the participation rate changes on a daily basis. Other, for provisional budget, other operation parts of the budgets will be prepared using reasonableness as our guide. Revenues will be estimated with sequestered reductions following from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, unless we hear something different along the budgeting process. Recommend working towards a two thousand and fourteen budget that freezes the mill levy at this year's rate. Tax dollars available preliminarily at a frozen levy is two million, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, less the estimate for COLA merit, and the range for healthcare premium, the board, from the Healthcare Trust Board, did recommend five percent. We've given different ones throughout, hearing different comments from different commissioners, but again, the Healthcare Trust Board is a seven, is, excuse me, a five percent increase at this point for budgeting purposes. Balance remaining of estimated taxes for operating increases would be a net of increase in revenues, which we usually have, even with, we have found even with the sequestration reductions, our estimates have still been really close to what that is, because we're very conservative on those, so we're actually not seeing a reduction to revenue estimates, because what we're projecting to actually receive is still a little bit higher than what we've estimated, which is only off five percent, which is, you estimate low, not high. So that would give you seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars to eight hundred and thirty-four, six twenty-five, to apply toward operational increases or increase in additional staff that may be requested from department heads. We feel this would be a good way to start the budgeting process, to give you a place to start from, to see what we need to reduce, so that when you go into budget hearings, you have a dollar amount in mind of what you need to prioritize to cut out of the budgets, or if you're listening to budget hearings, what programs you need to cut to come back to that point. We recommend that we follow the schedule you've already approved, that budgets and revenues will come to Holly and myself by noon on May tenth. That gives me a couple weeks to put all this information together, pull a new value estimate after equalization hearings, and present a provisional budget to, to the board on June sixth, whereas you will have budget hearings on June eleventh and twelfth, per your schedule, and provisional budget approval by July thirty-first, which means you can, if you're ready, you can approve at the first or the third meeting. And then I reiterated and changed some, I haven't changed any of the dollar amounts, but the other levy projections, COLA health insurance, sequestration, library, administration building, we've now gotten some direction on where the funding for the furniture is coming from. Question on equipment reserve. Of course, Mountain Pine Beetle, where you're going to budget and find that funding for needs to be decided, and we will go forward that the board, as set by a motion, many previous boards, is to maintain cash reserves at, for cash flow purposes, at twenty percent for most of the non-special revenue funds, which doesn't include highway. So that's what we're suggesting to the commissioners. We felt it was a good faith effort on the department heads to bring forth something to give a start of, and I've told them, yes, we will have to prepare budgets more than once, just like we always have. So they've been forewarned, and they are ready to take on this responsibility to get started with the two thousand and fourteen budget, and request that the board give us some guidance today.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, you mentioned if we, to freeze the levy so that we don't increase people's taxes. That's what it would do, right, if we froze the levy, levied them the same as we did last year?
It would be the same levy as last year, which is what we did last year, I believe, also.
It would look to me like if we took any of the CPIs, you'd have to increase levy to bring that up, wouldn't you?
The CPI is only, yes, but the reappraisal dollars were three, were over that. So using the three-point-four percent in reappraisal dollars and the growth will freeze the levy. Now, depending upon what your value did overall, freezing the levy does not guarantee a freezing of tax dollars. To do that, you would only take growth to freeze the tax dollars. There's a big difference done. To do that, you would only be allowed the one million, fourteen thousand, forty-seven dollars. No, I'm sorry, the growth, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven forty-two, which in essence is just taxing those people that have made improvements to their property.
So the three-point-four percent reappraisal.
Mm-hmm.
Where's that on your report? Where's that listed here?
If you go under the, on page two, sorry, their pages aren't numbered, under levy projections, with a slight increase in reappraisal values of two hundred and sixty-four million, three forty-four, three fifty-five, or three-point-four-four percent, you could levy up to the three-point-four-four of the five-point-one percent CPI combined total, and the levy will remain the same.
Okay.
Freezing tax dollars is different than freezing the levy.
I understand.
I got a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I asked it last, your last meeting too, and I don't, I.
Didn't get an answer?
Nah, I got an answer, I got lost. When we're talking about five to seven percent health premium increase.
Mm-hmm.
Let's take a typical person where the county pays, what, seventy-five percent of their health insurance?
Here's how the split is, Ron. On individuals that take our insurance, we pay seventy-five percent of the premium, the county budgets do. Of the other extra coverage, if they take it, which is plus-one or family, regardless of the number of other dependents, the county picks up fifty percent of that. So when we apply a percentage raise, we just take the premium being paid by the county and the premium being paid by the employee and raise it five percent.
So is a five percent health premium increase, five percent on the county's share, or is it five percent total, and the county's gonna pay seventy-five percent of that five percent?
For the projections, we can do it either way, and it makes a slight difference, but for these projections, we just applied five percent to what the county was paying and five percent to what the employee was paying.
That's both.
Yeah.
So the total amount then, at a single, five percent of seventy-five percent would be increased, and five percent of the twenty-five percent for the employee, so it amounts to be more than five percent increase in the premium? Because you're taking.
For calculations for just this, we just took a five percent. We can make that calculation anywhere you want, because we're self-insured, and it does make a slight difference, but not enough that we bothered with it for estimates. You can just take five percent of the total premium and reapply the seventy-five percent and that. They're ratcheted up, it's about twice for an employee plus-one, and about two-point-eight for family, we call it, which is employee plus-two or more.
So for your figures here, you just took.
Five percent off of what we're paying right now, just for estimations, but we can recalculate that if the board wants, or the Healthcare Trust Board recommends one way or the other. It was just simpler this way. It's a lot of calculation the other way, just for an estimate, until the board makes their final decision. We took the lazy way out on the estimate, Ron.
I understand.
But it doesn't really make that big a difference, since the board is paying the seventy-five percent of the employee, which it's been that way for, since Louis Freiberg.
And I guess explain to me one more thing. And I guess explain to me one more thing. When we got into the half step, so now we got a person at sixteen B or whatever.
Yeah, wasn't a half step.
How are we gonna straighten that out? How would you like to straighten that out?
Here's what we, here's what, um, if you look at step two, um, we want to phase out that B step. It wasn't a half step, I recommended that, but you, it was a two and a half percent, um, change between each merit step, two and a half percent increase. Last year, the board gave a one and a half. So, there's this one percent hanging out there. So, what we recommend is phasing out. No one can move to a step B anymore. And that if you get a merit in two thousand and fourteen, you move to the scale. The majority of the people, like ninety-some percent of the people, because merits hadn't been given for at least a year, um, move to a B step. So, the majority of your employees, if they get a merit in two thousand and fourteen, will only move one percent, and then they're on scale. However, if you did not merit and in, um, a merit in two thousand and thirteen, you'll move a whole step finally in two thousand and five, or two thousand and fourteen.
Some of them have a half a step, basically.
It's not really half step, it's less, yeah.
Not really half.
Would have been easier if it had been a half step, but.
Mr. Kellman, did you wish to?
I I just have some comments on the, um, health premium increase. I have been a proponent of the seven percent. I feel that, uh, in order to replenish our reserve in in that program, we need to, uh, go a little higher. I also believe that as things change with, um, with the way that healthcare rules and and laws and everything are being pushed down to us, that we're going to need that seven percent and that each year we're going to be increasing. But if, it would be much easier to do a seven percent one year rather than pick up and do maybe twelve percent the next year. It would be much easier for us and the employees to spread it out because I believe we are going to see a lot higher increase over the next four to five years in in what we pay in premiums. And, um, I feel like we're preparing for the future a little better by using the seven
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Now, Julie, have we ever put down on paper how much it would cost the county to pay the employees that are not on our healthcare? The difference between the employees' cost of healthcare and the ones that aren't getting healthcare?
You mean, just give them like a bonus?
Yeah.
Um, we have not calculated that in a number of years, Ken. I don't know if we did it when you were on the board. We calculated, if you pay a hundred percent of the employees, this is what we've calculated. If you pay a hundred percent of the employees' premium, you have to insure everybody. We only insure probably seventy-five percent of our employees. So, you'd be bringing on twenty-five percent of employees that already have coverage elsewhere. And it's either better or it's cheaper because they're not on ours. And at that time when we did it, we haven't done it lately, it costs the county more money to insure those extras, say if it's twenty-five percent at a hundred percent, than matching what you're covering now. So, um, but we can certainly do that calculation if you want to give them a bonus. It would be taxable. Income is the is the only way that that you could, you could give it to them.
Well, I haven't by any means, and I don't think Congress and anybody in Congress read the three thousand pages of the Obama healthcare. So, uh, I'm wondering what could happen down the road with those people that have their own insurance. We're giving other employees that are on the county insurance actually more money to work here than we are giving the people that are having their own insurance someplace else. So, and I'm wondering what the healthcare is going to do to that, and I don't think anybody has that answer, so.
I don't think anybody has that answer. It's the beauty of being self-insured with with sufficient notice to the, um, employees. We can change it any way we want, anytime. Whether we have the money budgeted would be another question that you'd have to look at at that time. But that is one beauty of being self-insured. You can make that type of change.
We'll talk about it.
Anyone else?
I'll just throw out an idea. If we didn't want to raise, um, people's taxes, then we would just take the growth.
Yes.
And, uh, that would give you approximately eight hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Mm-huh.
Of additional money.
Yep.
Uh, and it looks like when I look at the two point one COLA, the merit, the one percent merit, and the five percent is somewhere around one point, looks like it's one point two million.
The COLA, the merit, and the five percent?
Yeah. It's about one point two million.
Yep.
Um, what if we set that as our goal and tried to find some places to, um, reduce our spending to make up the difference?
You can certainly do that.
Because your estimates of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand is probably strong because there's some people that have retired and moved on, and we've hired at lower rate.
Yeah, it's a simple math thing. We take it times the.
So, that's probably a strong number. It's probably going to be something less than that. Likewise, on the, uh, on the merit.
Yes.
Very likely could be.
It will be less than that. These are just high estimates figured just off of the salary at at the rate.
So, the challenge would be if if we set that as as the, uh, the goal for the department heads, if you guys came back in with that figure, was able to give the merit, the COLA, the health insurance, and keep us, uh, with only, uh, using the growth dollars, then I would think you'd only have to do your budgets once. Is that possible? There's a lot of department heads here. I guess I'm curious what their their thought.
I can tell you right off, it is not possible for me because I don't budget for elections in an off-election year, and my election budget goes three hundred thousand that we don't budget for in an off-election year. So, um, I I I don't know. They can speak for themselves, but we can certainly give it a try. At least it gives you the information to start from, so when you go into budget hearings, you can look at their recommendations as to what they would have to cut to to get to
Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, just, I just want to clarify so that I have it right in my head, Commissioner Holloway. So, with what that, opposing that, basically, we're looking at the, at what we suggest, the two point one COLA, the the one percent possible merit increase if they deserve it, uh, the five percent healthcare, and then basically a zero growth on operations or or it'd be actually even less, especially if we had the sequestration hits of of, you know, anywhere from four to eight percent. So, we're, we're looking at at decreasing our operating budget and keeping the recommendations that we brought forward. Is, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, not criticizing it, just want to make sure I understand.
Well, yeah, it would only give you approximately eight hundred and ninety-five thousand more bottom line dollars to cover those increases.
Okay.
Which are more than the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand estimates right now. So, they they should look at, um, when you, when you go in to prepare a budget, what they would need to look at is what services they're going to cut if they need to grow in other places of their budget.
Yeah.
That's the only way you can assure a budget cut is if you cut services.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
We have to, I think, really take into consideration, we can, I guess we're just preliminarily setting guidelines, but our library contracts are up. I think that's, we better take a look at that because we haven't even started discussing the future of that. I think we have to look at putting some money aside for the county administration building when we move because that, I'm sure, going to cost us a bunch of money. I think we need to take a look at putting money back into the emergency disaster fund in case we've got more bugs to fight next year. Um, so, there's a lot of spending that we can be, I think, has to be done. Uh, so, we, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't guess, I don't mind, uh, Commissioner Holloway's proposal, that that's a good place to start, probably. Uh, and I hate to say it, but, um, you know, people out there are all going to be facing huge increases in their health insurance, no question about it. I'm not sure it's fair for Joe Blow down on the street corner to be paying additional money for his health insurance and then turning around paying more taxes so he can pay for the increase in the health insurance for county employees. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't look at having the county employees eat their own health insurance increases. And I I wouldn't do that, um, but if they're going to be getting three percent cost of living, part of it maybe have to go to health insurance. And I'm not crazy about doing that, and I know there's, it's a benefit that we've come to expect, but.
But Ron, if if we do increase our premiums by that five percent, the employees will be picking up five percent more than what they're paying today.
Well, and I suppose I'm looking at maybe ten percent more. I guess that's the only way you could do it.
Zero to, what you're suggesting is zero to the county budgets and ten percent to the employees.
Yep.
Is what I understood.
Not suggesting it, I'm saying, we may have to look at that. I I want to get out of the courthouse alive today. So, I'm not suggesting it yet, but.
But I think the employees are very aware that their healthcare costs, either here or somewhere else.
I know my my drugs that I get through the mail just went up two and a half times.
Yep, we did make some, um, changes. And and the healthcare trust board, you do have to give them kudos. They have made some, um, inroads in making reductions to their coverage. The drugs are something that they may look at yet again, but they've made changes in that. And they're, they've made changes effective for January first, two thousand and thirteen, and they may, they are again looking at additional reductions in coverage. So, the employees pick up that also.
Commissioner Holloway?
I, just a, uh, a question, I guess, to Ron. I mean, if we're looking at the library contracts, the administration building, and adding some more money to emergency disaster funds, uh, it would look to me like we as a board, I mean, those are things that we need to, uh, uh, come up with a dollar amount on.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and if we're going to come up with a dollar amount on those, then probably my suggestion of of the eight hundred and ninety-five thousand of new dollars to spend is, uh, not going to hold. And so, before we send everybody out to start working on a budget, maybe we need to figure those things out first.
The library is its own levy. It's levied outside those those areas, so that, this is county general.
But, but, and and I agree with that, except we are, we are running out of money now in the library fund.
Yep.
And when do we get the chance to opt out? Is it too late for this, for next year?
To opt out, you need to make that resolution by July fifteenth of this board.
So, we can do it for this year's election.
And then they have twenty days from the date of that publication to refer to a vote.
Because if we don't do that, and we, and there's been some talk that we're not going to opt out again, then the only other alternative is to.
Reduction in contract.
Reduction in the contract, or get it from the general fund.
Yes, you can, you can subsidize it from the general.
It could affect this budget. So, the opt-out, I think, has to be put on the table here soon, pretty soon, too.
You know, and then the the other thing, I think, as a board, we need to figure out, I mean, I'd like to see us get solid, uh, on what is it that we're willing to, um, put on that bottom line? I mean, I think we all would agree the growth of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand is is, uh, doable. But if, but if there's additional funds that we're comfortable with, then before we ask them to go out and put a budget together, we ought to, we ought to know how much money we're willing to to put into that pot. Because if you use just eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, there's going to have to be some cuts. We're going to cut some things that we're doing today that we won't be doing tomorrow. Uh, I think that's the only way that it's going to work.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and and I think there's some things that we can cut in the budget, but at least since I've been here, we've never really got to that point. We've, we've levied for whatever, whatever the bottom line was. So, I, you know, I think the first question or the first decision has to be, how much money are we willing to put into this two thousand and fourteen budget?
And and if you're looking at cutting services, it'd be nice to know from a department heads prep vision that we know what those are before we go in.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, maybe I can address the mountain pine beetle. You know, we did, um, receive money from the state for our mountain pine beetle project for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. And that match, um, was, went from January one, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. And we can use as match the, um, the different services that we provide, such as going out and and, uh, looking at the trees, surveying, all of that sort of thing. And so, it, and I'm, sorry, Scott isn't here, but my understanding is that we do have that taken care of over the next eighteen, that eighteen-month period, and that as far as additional in matching those funds from the state, that is done through what we are providing as services. So, um, I I don't foresee that we would be, um, pulling money out to, to do that match for the state, just as a piece of information on that.
That, I, and that's good news, I guess. Uh, of course, the emergency disaster fund is used for more than pine beetles.
That's right. But I mean, I wanted to take that out of the equation for discussion.
Dustin Willett, Nancy, I'm just, do you know if Scott, with those matching dollars, if that covered through the fall of two thousand and fourteen, or is that just through the spring of two thousand and fourteen?
It's all the way through. We, we looked at projected costs and what we have spent so far, um, and that equals, that equals what our match is, and then some, so.
So, through through the fall of of two thousand and fourteen as well?
Well, no, because the match must be met by June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen.
Right. So, my question is, is then would there be anything on the table? Because if 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 we're going to do something for the fall of two thousand and fourteen, that'd have to be budgeted in the two thousand and fourteen budget.
No, that takes care of, that takes it through that season.
Through the the end of two thousand and fourteen season as well?
Any other comments?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on the library, too, and I'm sorry, Ron left, but, um, I think it would be to our advantage, as we make a decision on this, to have a chart, and I've kind of asked Holly to do that for us, to to really look at what we've been outlaying, um, in funds, the percentage of the total we collect in this levy, and perhaps come to a, an understanding that, um, this is the history of how we've been, uh, distributing that that levy, and there has to be a pattern, and maybe that's the pattern that we base our, um, our contracts as they come up. And and we will have to rewrite those contracts because at this point, they're not set that way. But my thought was, let's say we've been paying eighty percent of the tax levy to, um, Rapid City Public Library, then that's our contract. We'll pay eighty percent of that levy. I personally am not going to be in favor of, um, of opting out on that, so.
We've already done that worksheet. She should have that.
Okay.
Yeah, we do it every year because that, that's where I get, you're running out of money here pretty soon. Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, along with that library, it's, and I'm not, um, I can't say never, uh, vote for an opt-out, but I don't like voting for an opt-out, and that's the only one I ever like voting for an opt-out, and that's the only one I ever voted for, the library, because we were put in that position by voters that said, "We want this." The only thing about it is, is that most of the people that voted outside of the municipality weren't paying a whole lot of taxes. And then they, so they left that to, and I don't have a lot of sympathy sometimes for Ag when it comes to taxes, but the Ag people are getting nailed atrociously for library cards. And I don't think that's quite right either. I don't think there's anything we can do about it. I just, I know that's how taxes work, but if you have a bigger piece of land than your neighbor, well, you pay more taxes. But I don't like the idea of paying for a dozen library cards for people that don't pay for them. We need to do something with those contracts.
The library contracts are tough. It'll probably take you two years to get a new one.
Then we had a deal, and we put a million dollars into the library out on the east side of town, and that was going to be our library deal, and all of a sudden, the city wound up running that. So...
Okay. Any, any further discussion? We, we have some basic issues to decide here today. And in, in that respect, some of the things I see as questions relative to budgeting and equity and, and that sort of thing, it strikes me that the county contribution to health insurance is, in fact, compensation to the employee. And I don't know if there's any way to, to create equity by saying, "Part of your raise is paying for your health insurance, and it's in your 2.1% or whatever." I don't know what that does bookkeeping-wise, but to, to do both COLA merit and health insurance for some and not for others seems to me to be an inequity. Another challenge that I see, budgeting-wise, doesn't necessarily affect the bottom line, but over time, we've had discussions that give me the impression, without specific understanding of it, that we have a whole bunch of reserve funds, little pots of money sitting around for different reserve funds, and I think that adds complexity to money management. I don't know how we get at that in, in terms of saying, "Okay, a reserve is a reserve, and these are the things that come out of it." But in terms of, of managing the, the big pot of money, I think that's one issue we could look at and, and maybe clarify a little bit. In regard to the library and the opt-out, it's the citizens who end up deciding whether there's an opt-out or not. We, we lay it in front of them, and they, they won't understand, if I understand it correctly. So they can react to that, and whether we refuse to do an opt-out or offer them an opt-out or not, if they care enough and want to raise their taxes enough, they can petition it, I think. So we're, I, I think we need to move our thinking to what might be called the, the basic picture, and that is to give guidelines to department heads for moving forward on the, on the budget. And some of the details, I believe, we can work out as we go. And we've been provided with, with a series of numbers, options, if you want to call them that, and we can make some motions and see whether they pass or fail. And if, if your motion fails more than once, keep trying.
With regard to the library opt-out, or any time the board doesn't opt-out, the laws have changed, and you can either do the opt-out resolution and, without the requirement of a special election, or you can include that you automatically refer it to an election, rather than having the people petition. And I believe that's what you were talking about. You can do that on any funds opt-out.
But how much does it cost for a special election today? 25, 30,000?
About 50 countywide.
Well, do you have to, couldn't you do an opt-out to fit into a regular election, timing-wise?
Well, you've missed the June primary, or the, the June 4th election this year, so the earliest you could do it would be June of next year. And yes, you can work it into that. That will be a county-wide election. We're not really having elections this year, so...
There's so many issues surrounding the library and, and the computer use and what it represents and so on, I think, I doubt if we're going to opt-out this year.
But if you did it timing-wise for June 4th, it adds next to nothing, unless there's no competition in that area, and then you'd have the ballot stuck. But it was, it would be minimal in comparison to having a special election.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to move forward?
Well, Mr. Chair, I still believe in the 7%, so I'm going to make a motion that we will increase the healthcare premiums by 7% for the 2014 budgeting purposes.
Say that again.
That we will increase healthcare premiums by 7% for 2014 budgeting purposes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to increase the healthcare premiums to 7%.
Mr. Chair, just a question, because I, I, I think, and I wasn't at the last healthcare trust board meeting, but it's my understanding and reading the minutes and talking to some of the people, that the healthcare trust board recommended the 5%. Is that, is anybody from the healthcare trust board here?
That's true. The board, the healthcare trust board, and I thought I'd said that, I apologize, recommended a 5% across the board.
As a response to that, Mr. Chair, one of the things that has come to light is that over the next four to five years, the anticipated overall increase for healthcare premiums for everyone is going to be 40%. So when you, when you start doing that kind of math, if you do 5% this year, then your next several years are much higher. And if we can do this in a little more graduated scale, it seems like it's fair to everyone and a little better use of funding. But on top of that, we do need to make sure that we increase our pool for claims, and that's...
Well, my, my difficulty with that, Ms. Trumpman, is, is trying to look that far out in the future with healthcare costs, I think, is, is just a shot in the dark. And we've made some changes in, the healthcare trust board has made some changes in benefits already that's going to save the plans and funds. And if we implement this 5%, we'll start building our reserve back up. And I'm not sure that the 7% at this juncture is, is the right number. And, and the main thing, I guess, is, we appoint a healthcare trust board, we ask to make these recommendations to us. And if we don't want to take their recommendations, then we should do away with the board, which I think would be a big mistake.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tone, county sheriff, and I do sit on the healthcare trust board, and, you know, we had a pretty spirited discussion about 5%, 7%, 10%. And the healthcare trust board did vote on 5%. And when Heine pitched the 5%, he also added 7% on his own. And if you go with 7%, remember, you talked about compensation to other county employees. About 30% of the county employees, myself included, are not on the county health insurance. I have my insurance through a separate plan. So you're providing additional compensation for, you know, 70% of the employees and not 30% of the employees. And if you're going to limit us to taking just the new growth of that 895,000, if you want to do a COLA or a merit or anything else, you're going to eat up, you know, some of that money by going from the 5% to the 7%. So I think you need to weigh all those things when it comes to making that decision, because there's a finite amount of dollars. And Commissioner Holloway commented on, as a healthcare trust board, not that we're the end-all to everything, but we did make a lot of plan changes that are savings to the plans. And when we talk about savings to the plans, what that means is more cost to the employees. So we've already pushed more cost on the employees by the plan changes we've made. And we talked about some additional plan changes we can make at the end of the year. And, and Heine also provided some information recently on some potential savings we can do with the prescription drug plan changes. So I would advocate you stay with the 5%. Let the healthcare trust board, you know, work through the process. And, you know, if we're wrong, and next year, I guess, we need to ask for 7% or 10%. That's something the commission's going to have to talk about, or decide what we do with healthcare as a whole, with the county, but that's my comments.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't want Heine to take all of this. I, I pushed for that 7%. I, and I know that there are many on the healthcare trust board that agree with me. So I, I, and I think that we just keep getting more information and more information, and it's very fluid. I mean, I mentioned that 40%, that was something we just got earlier this week on, on what to expect. So I know we can't say we can project out four or five years, but we know there's a lot coming down that's going to make a difference for us.
And, and again, I, I would remind you that this is just for budgeting purposes. We can have a heck of a poor year in, in, or high year in claims, and come January 1st, you might have to increase it 10, you might have to only increase it 2, depending upon the claims that we have for 18 months in the future. So you can, this is, again, just for budgeting purposes. It does not lock us into what the board would finally approve for healthcare changes for 14.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. Motion failed. Floor is open for further motions.
No offense, but budgeting comes on every year. You guys should have been thinking about this to give us some direction, so we can do our, our budgets for you. That's part of our responsibility. But actually, by law, the board prepares the provisional budget and puts it in the paper, so we need some guidance from somebody.
We'll get some.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Russ Tinsbold, IT officer, or IT director for the county. I guess, as a new director here, I would like to hear a discussion about the board's feelings about merit pay versus, or in addition, or at the same time as COLA. I, I don't have a good sense for what the board believes is fair and equitable, or the right thing, or the wrong thing to do in either of those cases. And because what, as directors, we brought before you included some discussion about COLA and merit pay and health insurance, I guess I'd just like to know what your feelings are, because it's going to help me to understand maybe what, what as a director I bring back to you in the future for suggestions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I get answering pretty quickly about my feelings about it. My thoughts are that when the economy's good and everybody's making a good living, not a decent living, but a good living, and, and making things go, and paying their bills, and being out there, and being able to proceed with the economy, that's fine. But our economy is not good. We all know it's in the tank. And so I can't, I can't justify giving big pay raises to people when the rest of the economy and the public and the taxpayers are going down the tube.
And I agree. Does that also apply to small raises?
I'd have to look at each one of them individually, but I, I have some real problems today. And I know last year during the budget hearings, I got shot at because I brought up the subject of making tax cuts. But I think if you go back and look at the very first year that I was on the county commission, in the Rapid City Journal and other newspapers across the area, running ads to support my thoughts about tax deductions and reductions. And so that's out there in the public about my feelings about taxes. So...
Well, I'll just sit back, and I, and I'm curious to, to hear everybody else chime in. Thank you.
In fairness to Russ, I, I respect the cost of living raises, and I also respect merit raises, as long as they indeed represent merit, as opposed to just going along and being a popular department head. Evaluation of performance that is worthy of, of recognition through merit is very important to make merit meaningful. Just handing out merit because it's there compromises the whole, whole process. That's my impression of it. And sometimes, I, I know from my own experience in, in my professional life, that I had supervisors who were not qualified to be supervisors, because they had no sense of personnel management whatsoever, including merit evaluations. And some of them I had to help a little bit, but be that as it may.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Well, I'll make a motion, as long as I don't get chastised in the future for changing my mind and saying, "No, we've got to do something different," like I have been before. And that's part of the reason I'm not real anxious to do anything today, is because all of a sudden, you're locked into that position. And anyway, I'll, I'll say, figure out a 2.1 COLA, 1% merit increase, and step, or a half step, 5% health premium increase, and a balance of 834,625 toward operating costs. And be prepared to have most of that chopped out if we decide to do something else.
So...
So you better, when you figure out your budgets, you better know what you're going to cut, because you're probably not going to get all 800 and some thousand. But it's a good place to start. And I got to go.
Okay, we have a second, and if I'm understanding you correctly, Commissioner Buscarud, that would be the tax dollars available at a frozen levy?
No.
That would be a levy frozen, not the tax dollars available. If, if my, I can guarantee my assessment went up 10%, my taxes are going to go up 10%.
You cannot use the word frozen taxes and frozen mill levy in the same sentence, because they are different. If you want to freeze the mill levy, that's where you have the $2,058,517 available. I understood Ron's motion that we're only using the growth, which freezes taxes, it is only taxing those new construction improvements at the 895, 742.
No, no.
You want to use the frozen levy?
I want to use the, the $2,058,000.
Okay, I'm sorry. That will freeze the levies.
That will freeze the levy.
Yes.
Won't freeze the tax dollars.
No.
And that is what I said when I read the first line of your chart.
Yes.
So are we clear now?
Well, to start with, yeah. I, I basically, what's on the, what's on that bottom chart is...
Everybody in here went through security, so I guess I don't have to move away...
So if we leave the public and let them spend, to me, we're better off.
Okay. Ali, are we on target, on course with the budget process?
Yes, we are.
So we can move on to the next agenda item? And the next agenda item is item eighteen, a request to waive administrative penalty fees. And I will announce to the board that Vice Chair Troutman is going to preside. I am going to recuse myself from this issue.
My name is Nate Oviet, and I'm here on behalf of my friend, Ms. Beverly Sears, trying to help her resolve an issue that's sort of been languishing since last June. It's a zoning issue. I've spoke with State's Attorney, Pat Grody. He's given his blessing for us to come here and discuss this with you, and try to see if we can figure out a quick resolution to this case. At present, I should let you know that Mr. Jensen has provided me, what I believe he provided you all, memorandum with some documents and some pictures of the structure in question. And I believe you also have my letter from April fourth. I think that generally sets out the circumstances that preceded where we're at today, but it doesn't tell the whole story. Ms. Sears has been living in Pennington County for many, many years. Her and her family operate the Packrat Palace, and she has five kids and nine grandkids. And that's sort of where this all started. Ms. Sears has her grandkids come visit her in the summer, and there's four boys and five girls. And as you can imagine, they don't always get along. And there's a separate structure down below her property that is similar to this playhouse, and that's where the boys go play. But the boys don't play right with the girls and destroy everything they try to set up, their tea parties and whatnot. So she thought she would get another playhouse on the top part of her structure. And there was a carport there before that. It was an old ratty thing. And she hired Mr. Allard, Dave Allard, to construct this playhouse for her. And that's about where her understanding of everything that happened kind of ends. Mr. Allard was sort of notified in June that the county viewed this as a violation for not having a conditional use permit. And Mr. Allard sort of took control over the whole situation. We're here now, I'm here now, to help Ms. Sears try to get this resolved. She received some bad advice, and so we're here to try to fix that. And what we want to do is bring the structure into compliance. We want to go get a conditional use permit, and we request that the fees be waived because the cost of taking this to trial, it's a wash. And so it's easier to get this thing resolved by getting a conditional use permit, paying for that, and then there's no longer any issue with this structure. And so that's why we're here today. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, my question would probably be to Dan a little later in this subject of, well, wait until that time comes.
Is there another picture somewhere of the other playhouse that we have in the property?
Well, that's on a whole separate lot.
Yeah, I want to see it. Do you have a picture of it?
I don't have a picture.
Because this is a pretty fancy playhouse with sliding glass doors.
Window shades.
Window shade, yeah, that's a playhouse and a half. A deck.
And Dan, since you're standing there, it says that the building permit was not obtained for structure being constructed on the above-listed property, that there's not a primary residence on the property, and I know that's a requirement, that the setbacks may not be met, so we don't know about the setbacks.
I believe the setbacks are met. It does meet the twenty-five-foot setback. There was a deck. The deck had to be removed. That also increased the building footprint, which made it larger than one-hundred-and-forty-four square feet. Therefore, the deck was removed.
That was my next question, then, is the deck still there as it is in this picture?
No, I believe the deck has been removed, and I believe it's a concrete patio they now have in it, which doesn't require a building permit.
Correct. So what do we do about the fact that it's built on a piece of property without the primary residence on it?
That's where the conditional use permit comes in. It's an accessory prior to a principal, and that's why they need the CUP, and that's why the fees were doubled and the penalty was attached, because it's after the fact. And that's what he's asking to waive today, is the five hundred in the doubled application costs. So a total of eight hundred dollars is what he's requesting to waive.
That's correct.
I guess I'd kind of like to know what Mr. Allard informed your client about, how to go about this and how to get it done, and?
My understanding, Commissioner Davis, is that he just basically quarterbacked it and took everything, all the letters went through Mr. Allard. This was obviously before my involvement. Once I got involved, I put an end to that, and we've been trying to resolve this with Mr. Grody since.
So Mr. Allard is no longer involved?
Did you third-party Mr. Allard into the lawsuit?
No, I mean, this is a quasi-criminal matter, so it's just Ms. Sears that's subject to the criminal complaint. And so it wouldn't implicate Mr. Allard at all.
Yeah, the complaint always goes to the property owner. And Ms. Sears is the property owner.
We know that this has not built any setbacks, correct?
What I viewed, it meets the twenty-five-foot setback. That's why the deck had to be removed, because that was encroaching into the setback.
So what she's looking for here is the rebate of the three-hundred double fee and the five-hundred penalty fee, correct?
Yes, they'd still have to pay the three-seventy for the normal conditional use permit process and still have to go through the advertising, still has to go in front of the planning commission.
I can, I've done that a time or two and voted for that a time or two, but I'm not necessarily in total favor of it. But I can see the situation that if we wind up in the courtroom, it's going to cost the county a lot more money to get that done than we are if we settle it here. Okay, is that kind of where we're at? Patrick?
Well, Patrick Grody from the State's Attorney's Office.
We got you hired and paid anyway.
We have to do.
That, yes, you do. You know, I, yeah, we'll end up, I mean, we'll end up in court. Otherwise, we are in court right now. I mean, it's an ongoing case. I don't typically take a position on whether or not fees should be waived, because I think that's completely within the commission's discretion. But I was involved with the case before Mr. Oviet. I'll tell you from my interactions with Mr. Allard, I would agree with Mr. Oviet's assessment. He probably gave Ms. Sears some bad information. Mr. Allard doesn't like county ordinances, and he doesn't like the planning department. And I, from my perspective, he used this particular issue as a way to kind of further his fight with Dan's department and the State's attorney. And, you know, Ms. Sears got caught in the crossfire in that, in that way. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me.
Are there any further comments?
So Dan, ultimately, they would be coming in for this conditional use permit, and it would be a secondary building to the primary building that's on that location?
Yeah, the lot is empty other than this structure. There's no other structures on this property, and this is considered an accessory. It's not a principal, so, and that's why they need this conditional use permit.
And the other, the building that this is an accessory to, what kind of a building is that?
It would have to be a house or a residence.
What is it, though, today?
There is nothing on this lot. It is an empty lot, other than this structure, and that's why they need the conditional use permit, to allow for that accessory prior to a principal.
But when you say prior to a principal, does that assume that there's going to be a principal placed on the property?
No, and that's why they've, we've done this before, gotten conditional use permits to allow for that to happen. And it can stay that way forever, as long as there's a conditional use permit.
So the carport that was there was just a carport on a vacant lot?
Correct, and it was grandfathered in. It was there prior to nineteen ninety-four.
Nobody used it because it wasn't attached to a building, or?
Commissioner Holloway, there's an alley in between the house where this, the lot where Ms. Sears' house is and the lot across the alley where this structure is.
Okay, so the Allards do have a house there?
Across the street.
The Sears, Ms. Sears has it.
Sears, I would say. And what is that residence? What, is it a building like this?
No, it's a house. It is a residence owned by Ms. Sears. It is a separate house on a separate lot. It's not on the same lot as this. There's a public right-of-way separating the two.
And that's where she lives?
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Grody, how, prior to filing the lawsuit, well, how was your, what was your cooperation like with Mrs. Sears once she found out that she needed a permit?
I never actually had any contact with her. I mailed her one or two letters. I always begin by mailing a letter.
Patrick, you should probably come up.
Certainly. Commissioner Buskerud, I never had any contact with her. I only had, I had some letters from Mr. Allard. I always begin when I get a file by sending a letter to the property owner, because often that resolves the situation. They know that the planning department carried through on their threat to turn the matter over to the State's attorney. So the letter went to her at the address her property tax bill goes to, and that apparently got turned over to Mr. Allard, because the next letter, I don't have my file, I don't remember if it was sent to me or to Dan, but the next correspondence to a county office came from Mr. Allard.
Have there been any actions in court on the lawsuit?
Oh, it's a, yeah, Ms. Sears, actually, there was an initial appearance that Mr. Allard showed up for, and she did not. And then there was, that was continued, and I don't, I think she wasn't at the next initial appearance, and a warrant went out for her arrest, and she wound up turning herself in, did walkover court, and somewhere around there, she hired Mr. Oviet and his firm. So my communication has always been either from Mr. Allard or Mr. Oviet. I've never spoken to her directly. I did try calling her at one point, but didn't have a good phone number.
I think it would be better all the way around to forego the three-hundred and five-hundred-dollar extra penalties in this situation. I know where she was getting her advice from, and I don't think that's always just good advice. So.
Is there another motion, Commissioner?
Say something. That'll break up my statements, so then I can make a motion. Okay, you did it. I'll make a motion to forego the penalty phase, and the three, the three-hundred dollars for the conditional use permit and the five-hundred dollar penalty base for Ms. Sears.
Is there a second?
I'll second for the purpose of having a vote, because I got to leave.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to waive the total of eight hundred dollars in fees for this. Is that okay with you, Commissioner? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes three to one.
And one abstention.
Oh, one abstention, I'm sorry. So I'll turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Peterson.
That's it.
Okay, we're on item nineteen. I did some planning and zoning, and do we need to go into a board of adjustments to handle this next issue?
If you're going to motion on the actual variance, yes, you do.
Well, but you called me yesterday and told me that people were going to withdraw.
Yeah, the, well, not withdraw, the applicants are requesting to continue this to the next county board of adjustment meeting.
And do we need to go into a board of adjustments to make the motion to continue it?
I believe you don't. You can just motion to continue it without going into board of adjustment.
Okay. So with that being said, we need a motion to continue variance thirteen dash oh five to what?
For two weeks, to the next county board meeting.
Do we have such a motion?
Some of it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue variance thirteen oh five. Is there anyone here who came to comment on this and did not get the word that it would be postponed? If there's no one here that is in that position, then we will have a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to set, to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is a second reading of rezoning request twelve oh seven and comprehensive plan amendment twelve oh five, RMS Load, Matt Keck. And item C is a second reading of rezoning request thirteen oh one, Arlene Crowe, Daniel Crowe as the agent.
Is there anyone who wishes to remove either of those items from the consent agenda or both? If not, the chair would entertain a motion?
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item D.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm just here to present recommendations from the advisory group.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to set, uh, to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is a second reading of rezoning request 12 07 and comprehensive plan amendment 12 05, RMS Load, Matt Keck. And item C is a second reading of rezoning request 13 01, Arlene Crowe, Daniel Crowe as the agent.
Is there anyone who wishes to remove either of those items from the consent agenda or both? If not, the chair would entertain a motion?
And make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item D.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm just here to present recommendations from the advisory group that met on March 27th, 2013. Um, this is just a presentation of the recommendations. No action can be taken at this time. The three recommendations that the advisory group made was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioner adopts the 2013 Spring Creek GeoMean Monitoring Plan on at least 18 sites from May 1st to September 30th, 2013, not to exceed 82,000. The second recommendation was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners announces another cost share sign up with an application deadline of June 3rd, 2013. And the third recommendation was that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners approves two riparian applications, SPC 2012 PC 77 and SPC 2012 PC 94 and one onsite wastewater treatment application, SPC 2012 PC 78. And allows the applications that were not funded to remain pending and to be considered with the next round of applications. Is there any questions?
Any questions from the commission? Any comment?
I'm Will Cowan. I've been a resident since 77. I want to know why, um, the public wasn't allowed in the meeting in Hill City.
The, uh, I think if you wish to address that, you do so under items from the public.
Okay, so that's later.
The issue, the agenda item that we have, uh, comments should be specific to that.
Okay, so I'll wait.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion on the issue? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
No, we don't need any motion. It is just a presentation of the recommendations.
These are just the recommendations, okay. Then we go to item E.
And then item E is Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, Approval of Participant Agreements. These are three participant agreements that were approved. Um, number five was approved in September 28th of 2010. Um, number 55 and 68 were approved in September of 2011. And this is just to request the chairman's signature on these participant agreements. Since the money was moved from segment one to segment two, these participant agreements are disagreements under segment two. Essentially, the funding has not changed. It was part of that 160,000 that was moved over in February. So.
Any discussion on this item? We do, do need a motion relative to this issue.
I move to approve the chairperson's signature on cost share funding project participant agreements as listed.
Second.
Any further discussion?
My name is George Farabee. The public hasn't had a chance to see these participant agreements. So you're out of order making a motion and acting on that request today. Thank you.
The, um, just to clarify, Brittany, um, the agreements are with individual landowners or?
Yes. And essentially, they're the same participant agreements that were approved, um, and signed in 2010 and 11. Um, they were just assigned 2013 numbers. Um, the amounts haven't changed. The verbiage did change in, under the term of the contract. The dates have just changed, it's when we, you know, the contract ends. But essentially, the terminology or anything hasn't changed. These have been in the packets, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe these were noted in the paper that we'd have action on these today on the advertising for the meeting.
I believe so, yes.
They were advertised as pertaining to state law.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Hearing done, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is items from the chair. And, um, at this point, um, just kind of touch back on the budget discussions. As we move forward, you may want to keep in mind that there is a question of whether or not we wish to, to incorporate long-range planning in any of the budget decisions. And, um, such things as the transition into the new building may be a factor. Uh, beyond that, I have a copy of the new Rapid City ordinance relating to tax increment financing districts. And that ordinance includes a change that would allow two county commissioners to participate. Uh, I currently am the commission member who, who goes to those meetings. And I, um, I did, um, show this to Commissioner Buskerud and ask him if he would be inclined to, to be willing to be the second commissioner if the board so chooses. And, um, he indicated that he would. But, um, golly, do we need to take an official action? It's not posted as such?
I think you should because we officially approve the committee assignments each year. So it'll just be a consent item on the consent calendar.
Okay. Let's see. Committee reports.
I don't have anything today, Mr. Chair.
Nor do I.
I can't remember anything either, so.
Okay, I, um, I'm not sure this is a committee report, but, um, I did attend the, um, Wall Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. They had a very, very good crowd. They recognized, uh, businesses and individuals for outstanding performance in, in a number of ways. And, um, it was, certainly reflected the vitality of that community. And, um, our next item is items from the public. And I would point out that we have, um, kind of made arrangements with Linda Burke for a presentation, uh, at the beginning. And following that, we will, um, have open, open presentations from the public. Linda, you're, you're on and the first thing you do is identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Linda Burke. I am a Pennington County resident living in Rapid Valley. And I am here this morning to discuss with the board, um, my request for getting recycling available in Rapid Valley area. Want to go on to the next slide, please? Thank you. Information found on Rapid City's Public Works website, Why Should You Recycle? Quote, Americans throw away 2.5 million plastic bottles every hour. The Earth Policy Institute estimates that this demand requires over 50 million barrels of oil annually, end quote. Additionally, it states, five plastic soda bottles make enough fiber fill for a man's ski jacket. So now I'd like to direct your attention to the screen. And on that, it is a life cycle of a plastic bottle. The left side arrows, red arrows depicts the plastic bottle moving only to the landfill, taking up space. The center arrow in the blue depicts the bottle being reused in its present state. And the right side green arrows, um, depict the cycle of it going through a recycling center, getting sorted, eventually becoming a semi-load, um, of baled plastics and then being sent on to manufacturing. And then at the manufacturing plant, the green option allows reuse of the plastics in that, first, they're ground into plastic pellets called nurdles. Second, they're heated to a liquid state. And then next, they can be produced into thread for reuse in items such as fleece jackets and carpeting. And as I said, you could get five jackets out of, or excuse me, one jacket fiber pull out of five bottles. This is an example of achieving, of achieving the three Rs, those being reduced landfill, recycled materials, saving raw materials, and reused material. All right, and if we could go to the next slide, please? So the three Rs. I question what happens in my local Rapid City area schools, um, as a Rapid Valley area, area resident. Reduce, reuse, recycle have been part of the elementary level education at both Rapid Valley Elementary School and Valley View Elementary School, which serves K through five. And each of these schools feed into the newly built, uh, attendance center, the East Middle School out there. As of March 15th, 2013, enrollment at these three attendance centers respectively were 563, 625, and 563 students. Rapid Valley Elementary School's fifth grade teacher, Ms. Lynn Arnold, took her students on a field trip to the, um, Solid Waste Department Recycling Center for Rapid City as well as the community's Pacific Steel business in town. And that was during the 2010, 2011 school year. She was able to do so on a grant and she wishes she could do so every year, but unfortunately, funding doesn't allow that. Likewise, Valley View Elementary has also had current publication education. Um, in fact, Beth Ann Furley, the City of Rapid City Solid Waste Division's recycling educator, just yesterday, visited with four classrooms there at the Valley View Elementary School. Oftentimes, education is coordinated with the Earth Day. And in fact, some Rapid City schools will be soon having the 2011 Environmental Educator Award winner, Steve Trash, who is an echo magician. And the next slide, please? I also wanted to, uh, make you aware that in the last three weeks, two, um, two, excuse me. In the last three weeks, South Dakota Stool of Mines and Technology students addressed two different governing bodies of the city government. And, uh, they were talking about the benefits of recycling. And they addressed both economic and social issues with that. And because Rapid City is home to several institutions of higher education, um, I think it's important for us to be supportive of the recycling efforts because ultimately, they reduce the use of raw, raw materials, um, saves lands and costs associated with development of additional landfills. And it encourages citizenry, awareness, and participation in environmental responsibilities. Next, please? Currently, Rapid City has these three drop, drop-off locations, as you'll see on the board. Personally, I use the Fairmont Boulevard one. And I'd like to have one out in Rapid City, or excuse me, Rapid Valley area to take my recyclables. I believe it would encourage others to recycle if there was one, you know, that they're driving by more often in their Rapid Valley residential areas. And especially when you think about those K through eight students out in the valley who are getting, um, education on environmental awareness, this would be a place for them to practice in their own neighborhoods. Next, please? Thank you. So what I've done is I've contacted four private haulers who serve the Rapid Valley, um, locations with, um, garbage disposal, excuse me. None of them do currently offer any type of recycling, uh, such as what the city does. They have the blue recycle containers, uh, for curbside in town. One of these companies, which is currently also serving is Southern Hills Recycling Community, uh, project. That particular company did offer the use of one roll-off container for no fee for the container, uh, to be placed. And that would be a place that we would able to collect the commingled items of plastic steel or aluminum cans and glass. We would not, uh, intake newspaper or cardboard fibers. There's not a fee for the container box itself. And the range of options for picking it up and dumping and bringing it back would be once per week to once per month. Next, please? Thank you. So this is a pamphlet, excerpts from a pamphlet that I found at the www.rcgov.org, Public Works Department website. And shown here is the various commingled, commingled plastics and such. And if you look at this list, just a quick review of the list up there gives you an idea of probably everyone in this room uses many of those items on a regular daily basis in their homes. So you can think about how much landfill space we could prevent using up if we were to recycle these items rather than put them in our refuse that goes to the landfill. Thank you. Um, I did speak to a couple of different locations concerning a place to put this donated receptacle, those being Don Turner of Don's Valley Market. And he is, of course, um, willing and happy to serve the community and allowing a spot for that to be placed. In fact, he actually is recycling plastic bags in a, uh, plastic bag receptacle in the store currently. And he says it's getting emptied quite regularly, like almost every day it's stuffed full. So that, in my opinion, gives me an idea that there is a base of people who are interested in recycling and would certainly be interested in bringing in the commingled, too. I also spoke with Chief, excuse me, Chief Tim Cobus of the Rapid Valley Fire Department. And he stated that he would be glad to bring, um, bring to their governing board, the fire department personnel, the idea of possibly locating this container at the Rapid Valley Fire Department. And something else he mentioned, and I haven't had an opportunity to check the location, but he mentioned, um, he believed there was a county-owned piece of property at the southwest corner of Racetrack Road and Twilight in the valley that might also be a possible site for locating this receptacle. Next, please? So, um, so the reason that I'm here, and I, I realize, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I realize I don't have, um, the ability to have you act on anything for me today. However, the initial reason of why I wanted to address the board was I have a place to put the container. I have a company to haul it, but I don't have a, a, a way to pay for the haul fee. And so that was something that I was looking at, um, addressing the board to see if that might be something that may be able to be built into the budget at some point. Additionally, if we're able to get a container placed, then I would need maybe assistance with getting approval or, or, um, advertisement funding, letting people know it's there. And I just wanted to make it possible for additional exploration. Anything that you might be able to suggest to me today to work towards, um, bringing the recycling to the Rapid Valley area? I'd like to do that. Next, please? And I just wanted to thank you again for your time today and, um, welcome any suggestions that I might go do next. Thank you.
Thank you. I, um, I would share with you that since, um, we talked initially, I have had a call from the manager of, of the recycling center. And, um, it's possible that they can get a grant to, to do what you're suggesting. So, uh, even though we don't have a mechanism in the county at this point in time, uh, there may be some light at the end of the tunnel.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, we are on items from the public, so the podium is open to anyone who wishes to speak. And if you choose to, please identify yourself. Sir, if you wish to come up?
Again, my name's Will Cowan. And reading the article in the Hill City, or the Hill, Hill City Prevailor, um, seeing that the public wasn't allowed in one of the, uh, Spring Creek watershed meetings, really concerns me. Part of the, uh, the project is public outreach. Money is being spent to reach out to the public, to make them aware of what's going on. And then you had a private citizen that's, um, not allow public participation, just kick people out. Not only did it kick the public out, the article says, and there's a quote that Justin, um, however you pronounce this, Krajewski?
I don't know.
Said, "This is my meeting." So he chose to not let the public in. And the article went on to say that he also kicked out, um, two members of the West Dakota Water Development District and a reporter. Now, the, uh, West Dakota Water Development District is supposed to be a participating member in Spring Creek Watershed. So what is he doing kicking these people out? It's absurd. And I believe members of the board were there and allowed this to happen. and allowed this to happen.
Commissioner Davis was seated with the committee. I was there as a spectator. When the announcement was made that the meeting was closed, I was ready to leave as well. And they chose to let me remain. I did not stay for the entire meeting. But to move forward and I will go ahead and speak since I was there. Initially, in the project, from segment one to segment two, one of the things that was not done in segment one were guidelines for the authority and the function of the advisory committee. What the authority they could assume and not assume. But the key word is advisory. Among other things, in order to establish some level of decorum in the meetings and to control that decorum, there were provisions made to close the meeting if it was so chosen. The fact that the meeting does not fall under the open meeting law in state statute was an element. And beyond that, I personally cannot speak for Justin in terms of those things that entered into his decision. I can tell you that as I sat in the right-hand chair in the back row prior to the meeting, a lady came in and started to set up an easel. And I just thought that was part of the preparation for the meeting. Next thing I knew, the easel was being taken down and disappeared. Didn't know why, didn't matter. After a little bit, Mr. Farabee came in. Again, it's kind of like the easel. I just saw him come in, and next thing I knew, he was gone. And a number of things occurred. And there was people moving back and forths, in and out of the room. And you probably know as much from there as I do. But I will tell you that if I am chairing a meeting and someone comes in and unannounced, without previous arrangements, and says, "I am going to make a presentation at this meeting," there may be some decision-making to take place. And that's because public meetings or whatever kind of meeting that's being held deserves the respect of the participants to the extent that decorum is just an act of a civilized community. And so in terms of closing the meeting after a trip in and out of the room, Mr. Justin came and said, "I'm sorry, folks. I'm gonna have to ask you to leave." And that's all I can tell you.
Okay, well, a lot of that wasn't reported, that decorum was ever broken, or that, you know, what was in the paper is a little different. I don't think reporters should be kicked out. And I'm not sure if participating members should be kicked out. The two members. And I know, you know, you weren't participating. And decorum needs, you know, that needs to be upheld. But, you know. Like I said, the article in the paper didn't say anything about that. And I think we need... It's a county, and this, we all want clean water, but it needs to be open. And things shouldn't be done behind closed doors. Reporters should not be kicked out unless something is being hidden. I mean, that's perception. If you start kicking everybody out, including reporters, something's getting hidden, and why is that?
And I respect what you're saying. And I would point out to you that state law allows county commissions and perhaps other elected bodies to conduct meetings without public comment. However, the philosophy of this board, and I doubt if it will ever change, is that yes, we do want the public to participate. And we do welcome it, and that's why we have an item on the agenda. So have I given you any insight into...
Well, you have. And I want to bring this up and make sure that it is open. I mean, you know, when public outreach, there's money being spent. I don't have the numbers for public outreach. And then, I believe, two meetings ago, public wasn't allowed to comment. And then public was kicked out before the meeting started. So was decorum interrupted. You know, there seems to be a problem. And maybe better advertising, or Rapid City Journal maybe report... Somebody reporting what actually happened, since you're, you know, what you're saying is a little different than one reporter, who happened to be in the room until they got kicked out. So I just think that the whole thing on the Spring Creek watershed needs to be open and let the public comment.
I understand your statement. And within the scope of it, this is not an excuse. But again, the fact that the organization functions in an advisory capacity only, the final decisions come here. And so that, in and of itself, ensures the public access to those kind of decisions. And whether or not someone gets to express their opinion at a given meeting to an advisory group, they're all there on a voluntary basis and functioning as a citizen. And somewhere, each individual, whether they're a member of the board, the group, or a member of the public, has a personal responsibility to conduct themselves in a civil manner. And that's just my opinion.
Okay, well, and I think we all agree that people should conduct themselves civilly. I just want to make sure, you know, in the future, that everything is open to the public.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comments?
You got a guy back there? Sure.
You probably remember me. I'm Dan Pulse, before this board, four meetings back. I came down here that morning and got here quite a bit ahead of time. I went over to planning and zoning. And I asked Dan, I said, "Do I have everything I need for this meeting?" And he assured me I did. Ten days after the meeting, I got a copy of the appeal that was filed against me, based totally on lies, totally untrue statements. That my home was on the market, there was covenants on my property. There's five distinct untruths in there that I was not aware of. And I wondered, when I walked out of here that day, what just happened to me? And I'm just here to voice my displeasure. I heard you last week guarantee a conditional use permit. I don't really know how that one worked, but... And then I heard two times in the last two meetings, watching online, where there's only four people present. Well, that person deserves the respect of all of us to be here. You ever heard that before? Nobody looked out for Dan. And Dan must have known that this stuff was untrue. And I'm just here to voice my displeasure. If you're gonna treat people, you should treat them all the same. And I should have had a copy of this appeal, and he knows it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Once again, I'm George Farabee. And I'll have to go back to the Spring Creek participant agreement. I probably didn't understand all that was said. It's partially my fault, and partially Brittany speaks really, really fast. The two participant agreements, as I understand it, were being not changed, but renewed, or what was her words? Those participant agreements, one was 2010, one was 2011, three years ago and two years ago. Were they, those agreements, in any way modified?
My understanding was that they were not, but I...
Okay, if they weren't, then what were they before the board for? If there was no change, then why the motion? And if they were changed, then the procedure is to go through the advisory group. In the advisory group, you have to have a break in action before a motion is made, correct? Bottom line is, I have no idea. Probably nobody else has any idea what those participant agreements are. They're three years old and two years old. They should have been recycled. We should have a chance to see them. If they were modified, then we need to see that modification. We, the people, we, the public. If they weren't modified, then why were they before you?
I can't answer that.
I'd request that you reconsider that motion and find out the answer. Why are we, the public, we, the public, being held out of these debates? Mr. Cowan mentioned public outreach. It doesn't say selected public outreach. Public outreach means to all, no exceptions. Correct?
Mr. Chair, I believe you mentioned a little bit ago something about decorum and treating everybody in a meeting, as Mr. Farabee is saying today, that that's how it should be. And he's absolutely right. The decorum from both sides should work. And I believe that we can probably make this work if it happens both ways.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As it relates to that, those agreements, looking at the paperwork, it looks like what took place was that these were previously approved, these projects, and they were simply moved from segment one to segment two for funding. That's what the paperwork says.
Mr. Chair?
It does not indicate that there was any change in the programs.
And I believe also that those were in the public packets. So if you got a public packet, it would have been there. It was certainly available.
Thank you for mentioning the public packet. That's not on the internet. You know how far some of us live from here? And you know when that packet's available?
Thursday.
It becomes available, what, Thursday, Friday?
Thursday afternoon, 24 viewable hours, first of June, Friday, 2:00, Mr. Chair.
Do you understand that some of us live more than an hour from here, from this location? It's not like we just hop in a car and run down here in five minutes and look at it.
So what are you seeking, George?
I'm seeking, let's follow the rules. If that, those participant agreements of this staleness in three years is stale, if they need to be brought before the board, then they should have ample time to, for the public to look at and review.
How much time do you think it should be?
And probably should have gone through the Spring Creek Advisory Group.
How much time do you think it should be?
A meeting. It should have been just like the advisory group recommendations. Anyway, I'll leave it with that, except to say, as I understand, you just have said previously, are all Spring Creek Advisory Group meetings now going to be closed to the public?
That is, cannot be determined at this point in time.
Let me rephrase it. Are they going to be held in the absence of public debate? Whether or not the public is there, are they going to be in the absence of a public debate?
That's up to the facilitator. The provisions that were adopted by this commission allow the facilitator to do what's necessary to conduct a meeting in an orderly fashion. And whether or not the debate, as you call it, is or is not acceptable will be determined at that time. Period.
Excuse me, sir. My question was, are your instructions, "This board is in charge of taxpayer dollars." Every single dollar that's being spent is a taxpayer dollar, whether they're out of Pennington County's pocket or South Dakota's pocket, or somebody from another state's pockets, they're all taxpayer dollars. Therefore, you folks are in charge. Your directions are going to be that there be no public input at those advisory group meetings. Is that correct?
No, it is not.
But they're going to be at the whim, the arbitrary whim of facilitator. Is that what I'm hearing?
It may be at the arbitrary whim of the entire advisory committee if they find the input disruptive or inconsequential. So in that case, you are not being singled out. It's going to depend entirely on your conduct in relation to that committee.
So the translation to me is that anyone that is disagreeable or has a different opinion of what's being done or handled or addressed at that meeting, then that's going to be disorderly, so to speak, or disruptive, and that person will not be allowed to input, or those people will not be allowed to input. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't care what you think you're hearing. I'm done talking about this whole issue. If I haven't been clear that decorum is a standard element in public meetings, then I don't know what else I can tell you. But I'm done talking about this subject.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would very much myself, in commission meetings and other places, out in the public, and not every place in the public, and not every meeting that I go to, but that I be treated like a decent human being, and which I attempt to treat other people that way. And I think that should fit into all meetings and all people. And I just think that's probably enough said for the time being. But I think that's what needs to happen. We need to treat each other decent. We need to, and that's all people, not just this board, but you, everybody out there, needs to treat this board and everybody else that's in here with some kind of respect. And I would very much like to see that. And I tell you, when I got called the draft dodger a while back, that was completely out of line. And I'll let that go from there. If there needs to be more conversation about that, I'd be glad with being four or 500 people in the National Guard in here and we'll talk about it.
Like a couple of comments. Number one, going forward, there's going to be decorum both ways. Have I ever, and you say, "Okay, he's gonna leave."
These are...
No.
This period of time is set up to take comments relative to the function of county government.
Excuse me, sir. When...
I'm talking. This discussion is going nowhere. And you will never be satisfied with whatever answer you get. So at this point in time... So at this point in time, I will accept the motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.